Hello, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call to order this August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Supervisors meeting. If everyone could please rise and stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Ms. Hannah, can you please call roll? Ms. Payne? Here.
Ms. Corporal?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Kiesak?
Here.
Also in attendance is Township Manager Ms. Tealy Gools, Township Solicitor Mr. Griffin, Assistant Township Manager Mr. Valla, Township Engineer Mr. Williams, Chief of Police Joseph Barterillo, Director of Building and Zoning Jim Ennis, Director of Parks and Recreation Paul Capera, Superintendent of Public Works Eric Garttmire, Chief of Fire and Emergency Services Mark Antazeki. Zeski, sorry. Thank you. Our next Board of Supervisors meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P. M. We have some special items tonight, as why all of you wonderful people are here, I'm sure. So first up, I'd like to introduce Carol Garner from the Summer Recreation Program.
So my name is Carol Garner, and I work for the Middletown Township's Summer Rec Program as a Site Supervisor over at Court Creek Park. So two thousand and twenty-three summer rec has come to an end. Eight weeks seems like a long time, but it flies by in the blink of an eye. So much time and appreciation is put into the program by the Parks and Rec Department, the Site Supervisors, the Counselors, and each year, it gets better and better. We know because we get to hear compliments and praises from the parents of the children. It makes us feel good to know that we have given the campers a positive experience and memories to carry with them. This is why we do what we do. But camp is not just about fun and games. It's about learning and growing together, working as a team, problem-solving, and instilling important values in our young campers. Kindness is one such value that we try to harness throughout the eight weeks that we're together. It can be as simple as taking turns, complimenting each other, or just a heartfelt smile. This year, our program specialist, Joanne Morelli, dedicated a whole week for our campers to show acts of kindness. We decorated cups and filled them with candy that were sent to our senior center. We made cards to send to sick children at Saint Mary's Children's Hospital, and we made origami letters and envelopes that we sent to the family services, bringing them a little cheer. But kindness does not always have to be a simple act. Sometimes, a little thought and hard work will still have, and while still having fun, can be the most enriching. In keeping with our motto from previous years, kindness matters, kindness is contagious, all three campsites joined together and held a car wash at the community park to raise money for the Ronald McDonald House Camp. We chose this organization because our campers realize how fortunate they are, and they know that there are some children who do not get an opportunity like this due to illness or financial reasons. Campers helping campers just felt right. We are happy and we are proud of our campers for their dedication to the parents, to the families, the community, the staff, and our sponsor Barbara Maglia from Century Twenty-One, who recognizes the importance of our cause and continues to support us year after year. So this year, we have raised two thousand three hundred and ten dollars, which is being presented to Laura Van Tassel, which is right here, just right there, who is a representative from the Ronald McDonald House Camp. Their mission is to support families of children on their medical journey with a community of comfort and hope. Middletown campers are so happy that we can be part of making this happen for others. We want our campers to always remember that in a world where you can be anything, always be kind. Thank you. And now, I would like to, you can have a seat. Now, I would like to call up Mike Klemovich. Please, oh, my, I know. Mike works for Middletown's DPW Department. While all the members of the DPW team work very hard, Mike deserves special recognition for his dedication to our summer program. He is always willing to help us with whatever we need or ask for, and does it with a smile on his face. Mike is the behind-the-scenes guy that makes things happen. Nothing is ever too much or too big of a project for him. He would tell you, it's part of my job, but the thing is, he truly cares and is an integral part of why our summer camp is successful. So just a little something from the Site Supervisors and Joanne. We want to thank you and let you know that you are truly appreciated for all the things that you do for us. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol. I just want to say thank you to all the campers as well for raising money for Ronald McDonald House. I used to have to stay at Saint Christopher's Hospital as a child growing up, and there was a Ronald McDonald House right nearby, so that there is a direct impact. So thank you, and thank you for choosing that charity. Next, we are going to do some swearing-in of some Middletown firefighters. So Chief, there we go.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to come here tonight. The fire service, like the police department, we are dedicated personnel. Our personnel are sworn to protect the public, and we think that this is a very important step in bringing on new firefighters. So we're going to recognize a new hired firefighter that just started this past month, and one of the firefighters was hired in two thousand and nineteen and did not have the opportunity to have a swearing-in. So I thank you very much for this opportunity. So first, I'd like to just call up firefighter Riley Collins, if you would, right over here, sir. So since I had the mic, I'll take this opportunity to embarrass Riley just a little bit, so. So just some bio about Riley. He's a lifelong Middletown resident. He graduated from the Bucks County Technical High School for Emergency Services Program. He recently graduated with honors from Eastern Gateway College with an associate's degree in fire science. He's a seven-year member, training officer, and lieutenant with William Penn Volunteer Fire Company. Riley started here as an inspector in two thousand and nineteen. His responsibilities include coordinating all fire prevention activities in the township and the department's social media pages, along with our big event that's coming up in October that we're going to have for Fire Prevention Week. So thank you, Riley. Just stand by right here for a second. Mr. Martin, would you please come forward? I'd like to introduce Darryl Martin. Congratulations again. So Darryl is also a lifetime member, excuse me, resident of Middletown Township. He joined the Pendale Fire Company in nineteen ninety-seven, where he has held every office, including the Fire Chief. He currently is Assistant Chief and a Training Officer with that organization. His prior experience that he's also going to bring to the township will help us out. He was a full-time firefighter at U.S. Steel, and he worked with the Shammany Electric as a construction site safety supervisor. Darryl officially started with us as a full-time firefighter on July third, two thousand and twenty-three, and is working with the rest of our crews to keep the township safe. Mr. Martin. So if you would, ma'am, I'd like to have them come up with their families and have them sworn in.
Here. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And the ordinances of Middletown Township with duty, honor, and fidelity as a Middletown Township firefighter. And the ordinances of Middletown Township. And fidelity as a Middletown Township firefighter. Congratulations. Thank you both so much. Do you want to get a picture? We're going to get a picture real quick. So next up, we have some police department recognitions. Sir Chief, thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Payne, fellow board members. So I actually want to begin not with our recognitions. We'll do that second. I want to begin with the ceremonial swearing-in of our two newest police officers. But before they are sworn in, I would like to briefly read each of their biographies into record. I always have, hang on one second, we'll get that door closed, they're taking photos. Okay. I always have our newest officers write me their biographies, and normally, they're short, direct, and to the point. However, our two newest officers here tonight wrote out two of the best bios I've ever read of any of our new officers. It speaks to their lives of service and commitment to both their country and community, and to how excited they are to become part of Middletown Township and begin serving our community right here. So I'm going to begin with Officer Robert Anselmi. I'll call him up. Stand right here, Robert. Okay, that's fine. No, yeah, stand right there, yep. "Incompicing a blend of community engagement and commitment to community service, Officer Robert Anselmi is delighted to continue his career in law enforcement with the Middletown Township Police Department. His journey has been deeply rooted in the tight-knit community of Langhorne, Pennsylvania. Bobby was born and raised in Langhorne, where he started his educational journey at Our Lady of Grace Catholic School. Bobby transitioned to Maple Point Middle School, and in two thousand and seventeen, he graduated from the Shammany High School. In the summers, Bobby enjoyed working for Middletown Township Parks and Recreation, where he started out as a camp counselor and then transitioned to Middletown's Public Works Department. After high school, Bobby enrolled at Bucks County Community College. His pursuit of knowledge led him to Westchester University, where he earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice in two thousand and twenty-one. Upon his graduation, Bobby enrolled in the Montgomery County Municipal Police Academy and graduated in June of two thousand and twenty-two. After graduation, he worked as a police officer at the Bristol Borough Police Department. In his free time, Bobby enjoys many hobbies. He's a self-taught drummer, a longtime Eagles fan, we're going to work on that one. He also enjoys snowboarding any chance he could get. He is also pursuing golf as a new hobby. Being a local in the Shammany kid who grew up in our township and served our township as a camp counselor and summer public works employee, Officer Robert Anselmi is a testament to the power of service and commitment to his local community. Bobby is excited to become part of the Middletown Township Police Department. He is looking forward to a rich and rewarding career with us, and I certainly believe he will have just that. So hang in there, because we're going to do our second officer. Next, I would like to introduce Officer Tyler Stanley. So Tyler, come on up. Tyler Stanley was born in Abington Hospital on Veterans Day, November eleventh, nineteen ninety-three. Tyler grew up in different parts of Philadelphia and Sheltonham Township, where he met his best friend Ryan McFadden about eighteen years ago. He's been close to Ryan's family throughout the years and is now married to Ryan's sister Kristen seventeen years later. Tyler has always been an active person involved in several sports such as soccer, track and field, basketball, baseball, and football. Growing up, he always had a strong sense of ethics and morals coming from being raised in a dedicated law enforcement family. After graduating from Father Judge High School in two thousand and twelve, Tyler decided that being a first responder was the best fit for him. Tyler says here that, funny enough, he started out trying to apply to Temple University PD and here in Middletown Township PD, but at the time, he wasn't old enough, as the minimum hiring age was twenty-one. So Tyler decided to join the military and chose the Marine Corps. He completed basic training at Paris Island, and shortly after, continued training at Fort Sill, Oklahoma, where he completed his artillery training. When he came home, he applied to the Philadelphia Police Department, started the Philadelphia Police Academy in December of two thousand and seventeen. He was fortunate enough to be able to serve his country and his community at the same time, as he was still enlisted in the Marine Corps Reserves. As a police officer in Philadelphia, he began his career in the twenty-fourth district, policing the areas of Kensington, Juniata, and Port Richmond. After four years in the twenty-fourth district, he transferred to the sixth district in downtown Philly. Now, after six years as a police officer and after serving honorably in the Marine Corps, he is honored to join the Middletown Township Police Department, continue his life of service by serving the citizens of Middletown. He's excited for this next step of his life and career, and happy to be doing it with the strong support of his family, many of whom are here tonight. I will also mention that Tyler's grandfather is a retired chief inspector from the Philadelphia Police Department, also served in the Marine Corps. His father is currently an inspector with the Philadelphia Police Department, and his mom is a retired police officer with the Philadelphia Police Department. They are all here tonight with Tyler, so you can see where Tyler gets his sense of service and commitment. We are happy to have both Officer Robert Anselmi and Officer Tyler Stanley as the newest members of the Middletown Township Police Department. So now, Robert and Tyler. You can each have a family member or members accompany you to stand with you during the swearing-in. Just go up on the dais there. And with that, I will ask you, Ms. Payne, to please administer the oath of office.
I state your name. You can go one at a time if you want. Go ahead, go ahead.
I, Robert Anselmi.
I, Tyler Stanley.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will obey, defend, and support the Constitution of the United States. I do solemnly swear to support, defend, and defend the United States.
Support, obey, and defend. The Constitution of the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the ordinances of Middletown Township. With duty, honor, and fidelity as a Middletown Township police officer.
Duty, honor, and fidelity as a Middletown Township police officer.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
I won't get in your way, Christine. Okay, next, we're going to present a series of commendations and squad citations. The first set of commendations is for the burglary of the Lugerman Firearms Store on Lincoln Highway the morning of May thirtieth. As you know, that store was burglarized by several individuals who arrived in a stolen vehicle. They made off with twenty-one stolen firearms in that stolen vehicle, but as a result of the rapid response and immediate actions of the Middletown Township Police Department, the Falls Township Police Department, and the Trenton, New Jersey Police Department, the offenders were apprehended, and all of the stolen firearms were successfully recovered. Four officers from our police department are receiving commendations for their work that morning, as well as an officer from the Falls Township Police Department and an officer from the Trenton Police Department, both of whom are here tonight, to receive their commendations. Then we'll present a squad citation after I give out the commendations to Sergeant Michael Russo for the work of him and his squad in response to the incident that morning. So I'm going to start by calling forward just individually. First will be Officer Corey Huff. All right, Corey, here we go. We got to do some speed reading here, okay? In recognition of your outstanding law enforcement service, you are hereby commended for the following actions. On May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, at three A. M., you were dispatched to a burglary in progress at the Lugerman Firearms Store. You arrived at the store within a minute or two of the call. Upon arrival, you saw a black vehicle exit the store driveway and drive over the median of the highway. You activated your lights and siren in an attempt to stop the vehicle. The vehicle did not stop and fled at a high rate of speed. You continued to pursue the vehicle into Falls Township, where Falls Township Police deployed stopsticks and partially disabled the fleeing vehicle. The vehicle continued to flee into Trenton, New Jersey, where it crashed. Several subjects exited the vehicle and jumped over the highway wall. You pursued the subjects on foot until losing sight of them and alerted the Trenton Police Department of the situation. Trenton PD requested that you and other Middletown officers establish a perimeter, which you did. This allowed Trenton PD to successfully apprehend three of the suspects. In addition, you ensured that the suspect's vehicle had been secured by other Middletown officers. Inside of that vehicle was all twenty-one of the stolen firearms from the gun shop. Inside of that vehicle, which is later confirmed had been stolen out of Philadelphia, all twenty-one of the stolen firearms were recovered. All the firearms were successfully recovered and inventoried by fellow officers. Due to your fast response to the alarm call, you were able to track the suspect's vehicle and stop the theft of twenty-one firearms. These firearms likely would have been sold illegally throughout the area and used to commit numerous crimes. All three suspects were charged with multiple felonies. Your actions reflect credit upon the entire Middletown Township Police Department and are in keeping with the best police practices and highest standards of law enforcement. Notation of this commendation will be placed in your personnel file. Will become part of your permanent record. Outstanding work. All right, next is Officer Alexa Moorez. We haven't heard yet, but I'll say it. Last night, Alexa had a fantastic water rescue where she saved a seventy-one-year-old woman's life from drowning in Lake Luxembourg in Court Creek Park. She'll be getting a lifesaving award for that later. That just happened last night, so good job with that, yeah, good job. All right, Alexa, in recognition of your outstanding law enforcement service, you are hereby commended for the following actions. On May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, at three A. M., you were dispatched to a burglary in progress at the Lugerman Firearms Store. Upon arrival to the area, you saw a black vehicle exit the store driveway, drive over the median of the highway. You activated your lights and sirens, along with another officer attempted to stop the vehicle. Vehicle did not stop, fled at a high rate of speed. You pursued the vehicle into Falls Township, where stopsticks were deployed by Falls Township Police. The vehicle continued to flee into Trenton, New Jersey, where it crashed. Several subjects exited the vehicle, jumped over the highway wall. You pursued the subjects on foot until losing sight of them and alerted the Trenton Police Department of the situation. Trenton PD asked you and other Middletown officers to establish a perimeter, which you did. This allowed Trenton PD to successfully apprehend three of the suspects. In addition, you ensured that the suspect's vehicle had been secured by another Middletown officer. Inside of that vehicle, which was later confirmed had been stolen out of Philadelphia, was all twenty-one of the stolen firearms from the gun shop. All the firearms were successfully recovered and inventoried by fellow officers. Due to your fast response to the alarm call, you were able to track the suspect's vehicle and stop the theft of twenty-one firearms. These firearms likely would have been sold illegally throughout the area and used to commit numerous crimes. All three suspects were charged with multiple felonies. Your actions reflect credit. On the entire Middletown Township Police Department are in keeping with the best police practices, highest standards of law enforcement. Notation of this commendation- Notation of this commendation will be placed in your personnel file and will become part of your permanent record. All right, next Officer Brian Agostino is not here, so Brian also responded to the call, arrived on location, helped form the perimeter, inventoried all the firearms, and really helped the transfer of evidence. Brian will be commended at a later time. I don't want to read his commendation since he's not here, so we will do that at a future Next up from our police department, Detective Kevin Platnacki. Kevin, in recognition of your outstanding law enforcement service, you are hereby commended the following actions. On May 30th, 2023, just after 3:00 a.m., you were contacted by the Patrol Squad Sergeant Michael Russo to respond to a burglary at the Lugerman Firearms Store on East Old Lincoln Highway. You were made aware that there was a large amount of firearms recovered from the suspect's vehicle in Trenton, New Jersey after a lengthy vehicle pursuit. You immediately responded to the store and processed the crime scene. You photographed the scene, obtained DNA and fingerprint evidence, spoke to the store owner, reviewed surveillance video, and recovered numerous pieces of evidence. You then proceeded to Trenton, where you spoke to the involved officers, including Trenton PD officers who had taken possession of the recovered stolen firearms and the fleeing vehicle. Over the course of the next 48 hours, you obtained several search warrants and arranged for the transfer of evidence from Trenton PD back to Middletown Township PD. You also oversaw and facilitated the extradition of the three suspects in custody from New Jersey to Pennsylvania. You consulted with the Bucks County District Attorney's Office, charged all three suspects with five felonies and one misdemeanor. Your thorough and extensive investigative efforts the morning of the burglary and in days that followed ensured that the scene was meticulously processed, that the appropriate search warrants were obtained, allowing the evidence to be transferred from New Jersey back to Middletown, and that the suspects were successfully extradited back to Pennsylvania. Your actions reflect credit upon the entire Middletown Township Police Department and are in keeping with the best police practices and highest standards of law enforcement. Notation of this commendation will be placed in your personnel file, will become part of your permanent record. All right, next, we're going to recognize an officer from Falls Township, Officer Jacob Blickley. He's here with us tonight, so Jake, come on up. All right, Officer Blickley, in recognition of your outstanding law enforcement service, you are hereby commended for the following actions. On May 30th, 2023, at 3:05 a.m., you were alerted to a vehicle pursuit by the Middletown Township Police Department, which was entering your jurisdiction. Middletown Township officers were in pursuit of a vehicle that had just burglarized a gun store. You continuously monitored police radio to track the direction of the pursuit and stationed yourself along East Lincoln Highway in preparation of the deployment of stopsticks. You were able to successfully deploy the stopsticks, which partially disabled the fleeing vehicle. A few minutes later, due to being disabled as a result of your stopstick deployment, the fleeing vehicle crashed just inside of Trenton, New Jersey. As a result of your swift action, three suspects who fled on foot from the vehicle were apprehended in Trenton, and all 21 stolen firearms were successfully recovered. Due to your fast response to the area of the pursuit, you were able to position yourself to effectively deploy stopsticks, helping bring the pursuit to an end and ensuring apprehension of the suspects. More importantly, all the stolen firearms were successfully recovered. These firearms likely would have been sold illegally throughout the area and used to commit numerous crimes. Your actions reflect credit upon the entire Falls Township Police Department and are in keeping with the best police practices and highest standards of law enforcement, and I have the notation of this commendation will be kept on permanent record by our police department, the Middletown Township Police Department. All right, and last for this incident, we have Trenton Police Officer Michael Manning. So Mike, come on up. Officer Manning, in recognition of your outstanding law enforcement service, you are hereby commended for the following actions. On May 30th, 2023, shortly after 3:00 a.m., while working your patrol shift, you were advised of a police vehicle pursuit entering Trenton that began in Levittown, Pennsylvania. The pursuit was for the burglary of a gun store, where multiple stolen firearms were in the vehicle being pursued. The fleeing vehicle crashed just inside Trenton, and the vehicle occupants all fled on foot, jumping over a highway wall. You informed your dispatch to have the pursuing officers form a perimeter around the fleeing suspects, and also ensured that the vehicle was secured by the pursuing officers as well. You and some of your fellow officers then quickly apprehended three of the fleeing suspects. After securing these suspects, you went to the crash scene. You were informed that all the stolen firearms were in the vehicle and accounted for. You secured search warrants and arranged and took custody of the suspect's vehicle and all of the firearms. You then worked closely with Middletown Township detectives and the Bucks County District Attorney's Office to facilitate evidence transfer of the vehicle and firearms through the New Jersey courts. Three suspects you captured were all charged in Pennsylvania with five individual felonies and one misdemeanor. Because of your swift actions at the end of the pursuit, you ensured the successful apprehension of three suspects. You also helped to ensure that all the stolen firearms were successfully recovered. These firearms likely would have been sold illegally throughout the area and used to commit numerous crimes. Your actions reflect credit upon the entire Trenton Police Department and are in keeping with the best police practices and highest standards of law enforcement. Notation of this commendation will be kept on permanent record by the Middletown Township Police Department. Outstanding work, Officer Manning. And now I'm going to call up Sergeant Michael Russo. So this is for our police department's response to the Lugerman Gun Store burglary the night of, or the morning, I should say, of May 30th. This is a squad citation presented to Sergeant Michael Russo, Officer Scott Patrick, Officer Brian Agostino, Officer Corey Huff, Officer Robert Ozinski, Officer Alexa Moore's, for your outstanding work in responding to, pursuing, and apprehending the suspects in the Lugerman Gun Store burglary and successfully recovering all 21 stolen firearms. Most definitely reflective of your excellent leadership, Mike. So fantastic work by you and your squad that night. All right, we're working our way through. Be patient. All right. Next up are commendations for the arrest and conviction of two individuals for the brutal homicide by shooting, which occurred back in December of 2020 on Wheeler Way in our township. The homicide victim had just parked his car very early in the morning as he showed up for work. Just as he exited his car, he was approached by two individuals who shot several times at point-blank range. He died instantly. Took a bit of time to close the case, but the past two and a half years have been a time of intensive and masterful investigative work, case preparation, and successful prosecution of the case, resulting in murder convictions and justice for the victim and his family. Sergeant and detective from our department will be receiving commendations, as well as two detectives from the Bucks County District Attorney's Office, and we will be presenting a commendation to Bucks County Deputy District Attorney, A.J. Garabedian. In addition, we will present a squad citation to Lieutenant Steve Foreman at the end of the commendation presentation for the work he and several under his command did in investigating and helping to ensure successful prosecution of this homicide. So I'm going to start with Detective Wayne George. Detective George, in recognition of your outstanding law enforcement service, you are hereby commended for the following actions. On Thursday, December 10th, 2020, at 5:50 a.m., victim Christopher Wilson was shot multiple times in the parking lot of his place of employment at 900 Wheeler Way. Wilson was pronounced dead at the scene. The shooters had fled the scene immediately after killing Wilson. You and fellow detectives from Middletown Township PD, Bucks County detectives, began a lengthy, thorough, and tedious 15-month investigation into this homicide. Your thorough investigative efforts started with your initial response to the crime scene the morning it occurred, and ended with your expert testimony in court, which led to the conviction of the shooter, Khalil Brown. During the lengthy and involved 15-month investigation, you conducted and participated in numerous interviews of witnesses, family members of the victim, and persons of interest in the homicide. You also participated in several live surveillance details through the city of Philadelphia based on credible information obtained through interviews and wire intercepts. Finally, you were instrumental in helping to organize the presentation of evidence and testimony before the presiding Bucks County Investigating Grand Jury. The grand jury ultimately indicted the second defendant convicted in this execution-style homicide. Your outstanding investigative management of the case and all of the effort and work you gave to this case over the 15-month investigation and concluding with the court convictions speaks to your dedication and commitment to bring justice to the victim and his family. Your actions reflect credit upon the entire Middletown Township Police Department and are in keeping the best police practices, highest standards of law enforcement. Notation of this commendation will be placed in your personnel file and will become part of your permanent record. Next is Sergeant Matthew Kreuz. Sergeant Kreuz, in recognition of your outstanding law enforcement service, you are hereby commended for the following actions. On Thursday, December 10th, 2020, at 5:50 a.m., victim Christopher Wilson was shot multiple times, point-blank execution-style, in the parking lot of his place of employment at 900 Wheeler Way. Wilson was pronounced dead at the scene. The shooters had fled the scene immediately after killing Wilson. As the initial responding investigative supervisor to the crime scene that day, you oversaw and managed what would become a lengthy, thorough, and tedious 15-month investigation into this homicide, involving detectives from Middletown Township PD and detectives from the Bucks County District Attorney's Office. Your meticulous and detailed oversight and management of this investigative effort started with your initial response to the crime scene on the morning of December 10th, and ended with your expert testimony in court in July 2023, which led to the conviction of the shooter, Khalil Brown. During this lengthy investigation, you conducted and participated in numerous interviews of witnesses, family members of the victim, and persons of interest in the homicide. You also managed, organized, provided oversight of, and participated in several live surveillance details throughout the city of Philadelphia, based on obtained information from interviews and wire intercepts. You coordinated the investigative efforts needed to present the obtained evidence in this case as testimony before the presiding Bucks County Investigating Grand Jury. The same grand jury ultimately indicted one of the two defendants convicted in this homicide. As the sergeant charged with overseeing every aspect of this investigation from start to finish, you were instrumental in ensuring the successful prosecution of this case, the conviction of both defendants, and in bringing justice to the victim and his family. Your actions reflect credit upon the entire Middletown Township Police Department and are in keeping with the best police practices and highest standards of law enforcement. Notation of this commendation will be placed in your personnel file and will become part of your permanent record. Outstanding work, Matt. Now from the Bucks County District Attorney's Office, I'd like to call up Bucks County Detective Detective Landamia, in recognition of your outstanding law enforcement service, you are hereby commended for the following actions. On December 10th, 2020, at 5:50 a.m., victim Christopher Wilson was shot multiple times, point-blank, in the parking lot of his place of employment at 900 Wheeler Way. He was pronounced dead at the scene. Shooters had fled the scene immediately after killing Wilson. You and your partner, Detective David Hanks, were assigned to this homicide investigation to assist Middletown Township PD in any and every aspect of the investigation. This led you into what will become a lengthy, thorough, and tedious 15-month investigation into this homicide. You took the investigative lead at the county level, conducting and participating in numerous interviews of the victim's family, witnesses, and persons of interest in this case. You prepared and served as the affiant on almost every search warrant involved in the investigation. You also helped to organize and oversee the obtaining of critical information in this case through court-sanctioned wire intercepts. Your expertise and guidance was sought throughout the entirety of this case in the area of warrant preparation and presentation of evidence, both to the presiding grand jury and in common police court during the trial. As part of the collaborative investigative team in this homicide, your outstanding investigative work and efforts ensured the successful prosecution of this case, the conviction of both defendants, and in bringing justice to the victim and to his family. Your actions reflect credit upon the entire Bucks County law enforcement community and are in keeping with the best police practices and highest standards of law enforcement. Notation of this commendation will be kept as a permanent record by the Middletown Township Police Department. Outstanding work, Eric. Next is Bucks County Detective David Hanks. Detective Hanks, in recognition of your outstanding law enforcement service, you are hereby commended for the following actions. On December 10th, 2020, at 5:50 a.m., victim Christopher Wilson was shot multiple times, point-blank execution-style, in the parking lot of his place of employment at 900 Wheeler Way. Wilson was pronounced dead at the scene. Shooters fled the scene immediately after killing Wilson. You and your partner, Detective Eric Landamia, were assigned to this homicide investigation to assist Middletown Township PD in any and every aspect of the investigation. This led you into what will become a lengthy, thorough, and tedious 15-month investigation into this homicide. Your investigative expertise and guidance was relied upon during the entire course of this investigation. You oversaw and coordinated all of the electronic surveillance and corresponding technology associated with it throughout the investigation. You took the lead role in coordinating the live surveillance teams and subsequently in reviewing hundreds of hours of surveillance video. You conducted and participated in interviews of several witnesses, family members of the victim, and persons of interest. You were instrumental in organizing and presenting key evidence to the investigating grand jury, leading to the indictment of one of the two defendants in this case. Finally, you provided expert testimony during the criminal trial, which led to the conviction of the second defendant in this case. As part of the collaborative investigative team in this homicide, your outstanding investigative work and efforts ensured the successful prosecution of this case, the conviction of both defendants, and in bringing justice to the victim and to his family. Your actions reflect credit upon the entire Bucks County law enforcement community and are in keeping with the best police practices and highest standards of law enforcement. Notation of this commendation will be kept as a permanent record by the Middletown Township Police Department. And finally, Bucks County Deputy District Attorney, A.J. Garabedian. Come on up, A.J. Okay, A.J., in recognition of your outstanding law enforcement service, you are hereby commended for the following actions. On Thursday, December 10th, 2020, victim Christopher Wilson was shot multiple times, point-blank, execution-style, in the parking lot of his place of employment at 900 Wheeler Way. Wilson was pronounced dead at the scene. Shooters had fled the scene immediately after killing Wilson. You were the assigned prosecuting Commonwealth attorney from the start of this case. During the course of this lengthy and involved investigation, including the grand jury procurement and subsequent case preparation for the criminal trial, you were instrumental in ensuring the successful presentation of this case and successful prosecution of this case. During the investigation, you provided expert legal guidance on search warrant affidavits and wiretap warrants. Your skillful legal handling of the grand jury and presentation of evidence to the grand jury resulted in the indictment and eventual guilty plea of one of the defendants in this case. Your handling of case witnesses, along with meticulous case preparation and presentation of the case in court as the prosecuting attorney, led to a clear and convincing guilty verdict of the second defendant in this case. As part of the collaborative investigative and prosecuting team, your expert legal guidance, detailed case preparation, and thorough presentation of the case to the grand jury, common police court, ensured a successful prosecution. This led to the conviction of both defendants, bringing justice to the victim and his family. Your actions reflect credit upon the entire Bucks County law enforcement community and are in keeping with the best practices and highest standards of law enforcement and criminal prosecution. Notation of this commendation will be kept as a permanent record by the Middletown Township Police Department. Outstanding work, A.J. And finally, I'll call Lieutenant Steve Foreman. This is for our police department's Criminal Investigation Division. It is a unit citation presented to Lieutenant Steve Foreman, Sergeant Matt Kreuz, Detective Wayne George, Detective Jake Gallagher, and Officer Ryan Morrison for your outstanding work in handling the Christopher Wilson homicide investigation, arresting the suspects, ensuring successful prosecution, and bringing justice and closure to the Wilson family. Steve, outstanding work by you and your team. Yeah, good job. All right, now, next I'm going to present years of service certificates to several members of our police department who have completed milestone years of honorable and dedicated service to our PD. First up, he's not here tonight. Officer Derek Leenhouser is being honored for 20 years of service from October 31st, 2003 to October 31st. I'm jumping ahead a little bit. Derek's going to be here on Halloween 2023, so he's getting 20 years of honorable service. He is not here tonight, unfortunately. He's on vacation. And this is a belated one for Sergeant Mark McLeod, so Mark, I know you're here. Come on up. Mark, this is for 25 years of honorable service from October 18, 1997 to October 18, 2022. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Officer Brian Agostino will also be getting a 25-year certificate. He is not here tonight, he's on vacation, he's away at a conference, so we will give that to him at a later date, so congratulations to Brian. And one of our amazing non-sworn records clerks, record administrator Annie Wells, has 25 years of honorable service, and he's on vacation as well, so we will give this to her at a later time. And definitely my right-hand guy, my main man, Captain Pete Feeney, is getting 30 years, but Pete is not here as well, so we will give this to him at a later time. All right, and next up, we are going to recognize a retirement, so I'll call Officer Mike Stumm. So, Mike, this is to honor you on your 20 years of honorable service to the Middletown Township Police Department on your retirement from our police department after 20 years of honorable service. Officer Michael Stumm began his career with the Middletown Township Police Department in May 2003. Over the course of his dedicated and accomplished career, Officer Stumm served the citizens of Middletown Township honorably. Officer Michael Stumm was an accomplished crash reconstructionist investigator, having expertly handled and investigated thousands of crashes in his career, including numerous fatal crashes. Officer Stumm proudly served on the Middletown Township Police Department Honor Guard for several years, having attended and honorably represented our police department at numerous funerals, memorial services, and other events. Officer Stumm was an accomplished motorcycle rider, having earned his Highway Patrol wings from the Philadelphia Highway Patrol Motor Unit School in 2016. Anyone who has earned their wings, and I know there are many in this room who have, or at least some in this room who have, or knows anything about it, knows that this is some of the most difficult and demanding training in all of policing. Officer Stumm received several commendations throughout his career, most notably his life-saving commendation in 2022, when without regard to his own well-being, he pulled a motorist to safety from a vehicle fully engulfed in flames. On top of all this, what I am most grateful to Officer Stumm for is his embracing of what was back then, in the summer of 2018, our police department's brand-new traffic unit. Officer Stumm volunteered for this unit and went on to make it one of the most successful endeavors of my time here as chief. I'm forever grateful to Mike for the amazing impact he made in his time in the traffic unit. He single-handedly took a unit from its inception into the fantastic success it is today and laid the groundwork for what is today one of our police department's most impactful units. Mike's work today is carried on by our new traffic unit officer, Jeff Wagner, who has followed in Mike's footsteps and continued the great work that Mike began back in 2018. So, Mike, I will say thank you for 20 years of dedicated service, committed service, and for showing all of us what a true professional is and should be. Thank you for serving the citizens of Middletown Township honorably for over 20 years. Congratulations, and enjoy your well-deserved retirement. So, we have some plaques for you, okay? All right, next I want to honor three of our members for their work in making our township's National Night Out the amazing success that it is. So, I'm going to call up Officers Melissa Robison, Officer Joe Calora, and ACO Cheyenne So, back in 2015, then Parks and Rec Director Debbie Lamanna had an idea to start a Middletown Township National Night Out in various parks throughout our township. Shortly after, Officer Melissa Robison approached me and said she thought that National Night Out would be much more successful, much better attended, if we had it every year at our township building. National Night Out is an opportunity to connect police and all first responders with community members, and Melissa believed in her vision to begin what has become an annual tradition in our township and in Bucks County. In fact, I'm happy to report that several other local townships and boroughs have their own growing National Night Out events, which were inspired and encouraged by what Melissa started and maintains here in Middletown. Our National Night Out remains the best and most successful in Bucks County and throughout the region, but more than that, it connects us and all Middletown first responders to our community every year in a way that few other events ever could. And for that, I'm grateful to Melissa and the two other members of our department who are here tonight, Joe and Cheyenne, who also contribute greatly every year to the ongoing success of our National Night Out. I would like to present each of them individually with a plaque recognizing their efforts and contribution to making our National Night Out the success that it is. All right, finally, I want to bring forward Officer Kevin Eckenrode. Our police department has the best K-9 unit in the entire region. Officer Kevin Eckenrode is a leader of our K-9 unit and now serves with his partner, K-9 Jacks. Very sadly, last month, our department suffered the loss of retired K-9 NICS, who had been a faithful, dedicated, and loving partner to Officer Eckenrode for many years. I would like to read a short tribute in K-9 NICS's honor. K-9 NICS served honorably alongside Officer Kevin Eckenrode for 11 years. During NICS's time with the Middletown Township Police Department, he had over 400 deployments, which resulted in more than 100 surrenders. He had six apprehensions and 15 successful tracks. Two of NICS's most memorable and notable tracks were the locating of a missing autistic child in Wermanster and the apprehension of a home invasion suspect in Lower Makefield. K-9 NICS assisted Middletown Township and numerous other locations in more than 60 explosive sweeps, some in our own Neshamity School District, keeping our school students safe, and over 60 successful article searches. K-9 NICS was a fan favorite in the Middletown Township community, participating in over 100 demonstrations and events across the county throughout his MTPD career. Losing any animals is devastating, but only those in the K-9 handler community will truly understand the grief that is felt when they lose their beloved K-9 partner. Handler spend more hours with their K-9 partner than they do their own human family. They put their lives and trust into their K-9, which forms a very unique and beautiful bond. I know this has been especially hard on Kevin and his family enduring the loss of NICS, and I want to thank Kevin for his expert handling of NICS. Tonight, we honor the life of NICS and thank NICS for his dedicated service to Bucks County, our township, and our police department. I'm going to present Kevin with this beautiful memorial plaque in honor of NICS's life. All right, with that, I need a break, so I think we had a good night of recognition. I just want to thank all the officers who showed up tonight. I'm excited that we have two outstanding new officers in Bobby Anselmi and Tyler Stanley, and I'm very grateful, very grateful, for this 45 minutes that you gave tonight, for us to be able to recognize our officers. It means a lot to us and our department. I'm glad we were able to do it, to show you, the board, some of the excellent work that we're doing in the police department, and again, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for this.
Before we move on, I'm just going to give everyone a few minutes to clear the room Okay, if everyone's ready, I'll get things restarted here. So, we have a conditional use hearing, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Griffin.
Yes, thank you, Chairperson Payne. Before you this evening, it's an application for conditional use approval for the property located at 2300 Lincoln Highway, also known as the Oxford Valley Mall. The applicant is Cirque Entertainment 2 LLC, which is based out of Sarasota, Florida. The applicant is requesting conditional use approval, which is required with the Middletown Township zoning ordinance, to hold a temporary circus event for four days at the property between August 17, 2023, and August 20, 2023. The required conditional use approval is from Section 500-2410G1 to allow a temporary community event at the property, which is located in the general business zoning district. At the outset of the hearing, I'd ask if there's anybody present seeking party status. Traditionally, party status gives you the ability to question witnesses, to participate in the hearing, but seeing no one, I would go ahead and just mark the board's exhibits, which will be entered into evidence without objection. As Board Exhibit 1, I'll mark the application for conditional use, which was received on June 26, 2023, along with several attachments, which include permission from the Oxford Valley Mall to hold the event, a schedule of performances, as well as a site plan showing the tent layout and parking. As Exhibit B2, I'll mark the notice of hearing and proof of advertising. I note that this proceeding was duly advertised on July 30, 2023, and August 6, 2023. As Exhibit B3, I'll mark the proof of posting from the township, showing that this event was advertised on July 31, 2023, in three different locations on the property. As Exhibit B4, I'll mark the applicant provisions of the township zoning ordinance, including Sections 500-3209C, 500-2410, and 500-2410G. And finally, as Exhibit B5, I'll mark a copy of the memorandum prepared by the Director of Building and Zoning Jim Ennis, which lays basically the background and the submittals from the applicant. Again, because there's nobody seeking party status, those will be admitted without objection, and at this time, I'd ask that a representative for the applicant step forward and be sworn
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Jose Astaja, I'm a representative for Cirque Italia, Cirque Entertainment. I do. Jose Astaja, J-O-S-E. My last name is A-S-T-A-M-A-R-O, A-I-C-Z-Z-E-R-A.
Now, Mr. Astaja, just for the board, would you just lay out the logistics of the event, the setup, and the general schedule?
The setup is going to be tomorrow, starting setup, take it around 18-hour setup, and the schedule is for Thursday, 17, August 17, through Sunday, August 20. We have a one show, Thursday 7:30, Friday, another show 7:30, Saturday 1:30, 4:30, and 7:30, and Sunday 1:30, 4:30. After the last show, we start in town and just take it seven, eight hours stay down.
Okay, Mr. Astaja, I already marked your application as an exhibit. Are there any other exhibits or evidence that you wanted to present this evening, or are you just relying on what's already been marked?
We have everything, all the evidence we sent through email to my office. This is what we have, and in specific thing, I can answer if you have a question or something.
And if the board has any questions for the applicant?
Do you have the necessary permits yet from the Building and Zoning Department to host the event?
They were just signed off today, so they're ready to be picked up tomorrow, and during the staging, all the necessary inspections will occur.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis.
And I see here that they're holding escrow to cover the police fire and emergency services?
So, if there's no further questions and no further evidence from the applicant, the matter's ripe for the board to vote.
We need to make a motion, right?
Yeah, I can make the motion, or you can make the motion as well. I know that there was one, I believe, included with the packet of materials.
I'll make a motion to approve conditional use for the... Sorry. Yeah, for a four-day circus event at 2300 Lincoln Highway, Oxford Valley Mall. The applicant being Cirque Entertainment LLC.
I'll second. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So, next actually is public comment. So, if there's any public comment, please come up, state your name and address for the Seeing none, I will move on to the consent agenda. At this time, I will accept a motion for approval of the consent agenda as stated. I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items as stated. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0. Next, we have consideration of authorizing Resolution 23-18R for Neshamity School District Resource Officer, Chief Bartarilla.
Good evening once again. The School Resource Officer Program for our police department has been a great success since it began in 2014. I believe that we by far share the best working relationship between police department and school district in the county. We have a great working relationship and partnership with the Neshamity School We have a great working relationship and partnership with the Neshamity School District. And this agreement allows our Police Department to provide a third School Resource Officer within our Police Department. This agreement also increases the amount of compensation we will be paid by the School District from $90,000 annually to $180,000 annually. More than anything, this agreement between our Police Department and the Neshamity School District solidifies the commitment to safety and security for all school students in our township. I do want to say that while our primary focus is the Neshamity School District, our School Resource Officers, when needed or called upon, will provide SRO service to the non-public schools in our township, the George School, Newtown Friends, Holy Family Regional, and we partner with Pendel at Our Lady of Grace and even Karen University, should they call. We take very seriously the commitment to safety for all of our schools. I want to thank Neshamity Superintendent Jay Bowman and the Neshamity School Board for their commitment to the SRO program, for their unwavering support and partnership with our township and Police Department. If the board concurs, I would respectfully ask for your approval of this important inter-agency agreement between Middletown Township and the Neshamity School District. I also, you know, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I guess my first question is, this is a department, a employee of the Police Department, correct?
Correct, Ms. Kane. This will be a Police Department employee, sworn officer, under the control of the Middletown Township Police Department and Middletown Township.
And are they on site even when school's out, like in the summer, or?
They are at the high school, because the high school is almost like a year-round campus, and they have so many summer programs and athletics and everything going in the summer. But the two middle school SROs come back to the township and they patrol during the summer, mostly they do bicycle patrol.
Okay, and we don't have this additional one in the budget? So this is an add to our department?
That is correct. It will take us from 59 sworn to 60 sworn.
Okay, and the amount that the School District does give us doesn't cover the full cost? Do we have a feel for the percent that it does cover?
So my estimate is about a third.
Okay.
It's about a third per officer. So 180 is about a third of the total cost of three.
Okay.
And this request came from the School District themselves, right? If I recall?
That is correct, Ms. Kane. It came from Acting Superintendent Jay Bowman.
And even though they're only paying a third of the cost, their proportion of what they're paying is more, is that correct?
They are. So they were paying $45,000 per officer prior. The agreement to add the SRO is that they would pay $60,000 per officer, which is why the amount doubled.
Are there any other questions?
There's no questions. I just, I think that this is a great program. I know that it's a cost to the township, but I do think that this has been a great program for our school students and for our community, so I just wanted to add that. And if there's no questions, I can make a motion.
Sure, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 23 to authorize the Township Manager to enter in a proposed intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Neshamity School District and Middletown Township Police Department, sending forth the terms and conditions to utilize, for utilization of the Middletown Township Police Department's School Resource Officers.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, this consideration of authorizing the purchase of one Field Pro 60/40 infield groomer, Mr. Gartenmeier.
Good evening. Just a little background on this. So the reason we're asking for this equipment is to maintain the parks that we have, the ball fields. We do about 12 ball fields. We have a machine right now that's not the right machine for using to do the fields. It's something that we looked at for a while, and this year we brought it up. It was put in the budget, so this is why it's in front of you tonight.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gartenmeier?
Do you recall what it's in the budget for?
It was, I believe, $33,000 was put in the budget. It did come under a little bit. We actually looked at three different models, and this one is the best one that would suit our needs for what we need.
Is this a net add to our equipment, or is this a replacement?
I can tell you, probably about 15 years ago, we had one. It did go by the wayside, the motor did blow up in it, if I recall. So we used a different piece of machinery, and we're to the point now that with this machine, we make it a lot easier, more efficient in time-consuming, less of doing the fields. And that's why I'm looking into getting this machinery.
How long do we expect this equipment to?
This year, you're probably looking at at least 15 years. It's not something you would use every day, but it's going to be used, obviously, on a regular basis on the fields. We'll get more, done more compared to what they do now. And talking with Paul from Park and Recs, you know, it's something that we both feel that, you know, it could be utilized, and, you know, the ball fields could look a lot better than what they do.
If there are no other questions, I would accept a motion.
Move to authorize the purchase of one Field Pro 60/40 infield groomer from Turf Equipment and Supply, West Chester, Pennsylvania, for a total of $32,631.
I'll second. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Gartenmeier. Oh, I guess don't go anywhere.
Just waiting.
So consideration of the 2023-2024 Bucks County Consortium Fuel Bid, thank you.
So once again, every year, along with the salt and some other items, we enter into a consortium bid with Bucks County. So this year, it was sent out in May, and the results came back. And what you have in front of you for the gas is Petroleum Traders, once again, and Riggins is the diesel provider. The only one that changed was the home heating fuel, which is Wilson, which is a new one. Other than that, it usually flip-flops back and forth every year, if you look back. So the totals that are on this sheet are estimated. You know, we go from year to year, and we try to estimate how many gallons we're going to use, how much. Obviously, we haven't had that many bad winters, but, you know, you get one bad winter, we're going to be using more fuel, obviously, and things like that. So the recommendation is on the sheet that we go with the providers that are in front of you for our fuel needs.
Could you remind me what vehicles utilize this fuel for the department?
So every department that the township owns, LNI, the Police Fire, DPW, and we do have a mixture of gas and diesel, obviously, and all our, like, off-road equipment, everything is used. Then we have outside agencies, the fire companies, the four fire companies, the rescue squad, the two police, or three police departments also. And then they get billed out at the end of the month. It goes into billing, and they get billed out for the usage.
And do we know how this amount has changed over the past year or two? Given the fuel costs?
It has gone up. It's on a sliding scale, it's an opium sliding scale, and it goes by market price, is the way it goes. So, I mean, like I said, these numbers that are in here should cover what we need, estimated on the past years, but then again, you know, things could go, you know, out of hand, too.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to award the 2023-24 Fuel Consortium contract to Petroleum Traders Corp. of Fort Wayne, New Jer, I'm sorry, Indiana, for unleaded gasoline with the estimate amount of $270,000. Wilson of Willingford, of Willingford, PA, for heating fuel with an estimate amount of $25,000 on an as-needed basis, and Riggins Incorporated of Cumberland, New Jersey, for the low sulfur diesel with an estimated amount of $85,000.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Gartenmeier.
Thank you.
Next, I believe we have Mr. Valla, for the consideration of awarding the 2023 Community Development Block Grant to ADA Curb Ramp Project.
Good evening, thank you. In front of you is a memo encapsulating the Community Development Block Grant Program, some funding that we received by way of Bucks County to fund up to $220,000 of additional ADA curb ramps to be constructed in the Cobalt Ridge neighborhood. We were actually awarded more money from Bucks County than we originally sought, and as a result, we added an alternate to the bid for this round of ramps. The bids came in facilitated by Remington and Vernick Township Engineer. The base bid came in at $186,350, and those additional locations, as an alternate number one, came in at $92,335. The county has indicated to us, so if both the base and the alternate bids were awarded, it would exceed the available grant funding by $58,685. The county has indicated to us that we do have the ability to request that additional funding. However, with the timing of the bids that we received, the decision does have to be made tonight on whether to award either no bids, just the base bid, or the base and the alternate. And if the alternate is awarded by the board tonight, we will certainly make every effort to get those additional funds from Bucks County, but it is not guaranteed.
So if, in the, I understand we have a good chance of getting the additional funds. In the chance that we don't get the additional funds, what kind of position are we in to take that $58,000?
Yeah, it would have to be absorbed by the township's capital fund.
Yes, there's money in the capital fund. This is, I spoke to the chairperson about this leading up to the meeting, you know. This is a tough decision to have to make. We know that you, we need to do the curbs. If you only award the base bid, then you're leaving $40,000 of the grant on the table. We're giving back $40,000. If you award the alternate, you're, you know, committing to the $50,000 with the fingers crossed that we can get some of that from the county. So, yeah, as Nick mentioned, you have a tough decision, and you can award just the base or the base and the alternate.
Can you remind us, Mr. Valla, what the alternate includes?
Sure. Mr. Williams can confirm the exact number, but basically, the alternate includes additional curb ramp locations because the county awarded additional funds than we initially sought after. I think it was 14 ramps, but he can certainly confirm for us.
All within Cobalt Ridge, though, correct?
Yeah, all of the ramps, both base and alternate at Cobalt Ridge.
Would that by any chance finish that section, or we still have curb ramps to do?
We'll still have curb ramps to do. That's a huge neighborhood. It's a good chunk, though.
Is there any additional costs over and above what's in the bids for these ADA curb ramps that we need to take into consideration?
Remington Vernick's time for doing the bid prep and for doing the inspection and oversight of the work.
Do we know how much that'll run for both the base and the alternative?
So on average, for a curb ramp program, Remington Vernick spends anywhere from about $30,000 to $50,000 of time on top of the actual direct cost to the contractor.
Okay, so we're looking at more of 58 plus 30 for this full amount?
Correct, and that, the engineering, any kind of non-construction costs are not redeemable by the grant?
I'll weigh in unpersonally, in favor of rolling the dice and going with the alternate. I never like giving back grant money that's been awarded, and put my hope and faith in the county that they can come up with the additional funding to allow this to be fully funded. But even if it's not, I think it's something we need to ultimately do anyway at some point down the road. So my personal opinion is I would award the base and alternate for $278,685.
I'll second that.
I don't know that I made a motion.
I was just...
No, I was just commenting.
Sorry about that.
You can make that.
I tend to agree.
Just having a discussion.
I tend to agree. I feel like the cost is going to go up.
Like eventually, we have to do.
We're doing it anyway, at some point.
We started maybe seven or eight years ago with a concerted effort to address the handicapped access ramps in our community, and we are hitting them gradually, a year at a time. This year is an unusual year because of the grant funding, that we basically did two programs in one year. So yes, it needs to be done.
I'll just comment that the American for Disabilities Act is like 33 years old, so I think we're well past time to make sure our neighborhoods are accessible. With that being said, I will, I will accept a motion, if somebody wants to make one.
I'll make a motion to award the base bid and alternate bid number one to, what is the name of this company?
NJS Concrete.
NJS Concrete LLC, for a total amount of $278,685.
Now, I'll second. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions?
I just have a clarifying question. So one of the, I guess it's a process question. How do we go about the process of putting in like a base bid and an alternative? Did we just not have a full idea of the cost that these bids would come in at, that the fact that it came in 60 over, or was it, we knew what we were putting in when we put it in?
So with this particular grant program, the base bid is based off of the original locations that we applied to with the original ask from Bucks County. Bucks County said, "We have extra money to give you, we're going to give it to you. Can you do additional locations with this additional money?" And that's what's comprised of alternate number one. And the estimates for the grant, as well as the alternate, are based upon our Remington and Vernick's estimation.
I guess my question is, did we put a base and alternate in thinking that it was going to come out to 220, and it didn't? It come out much higher?
No, so what happened originally, well, it's kind of exactly how Nick explained it. We knew that we were targeting $200,000, so we put together a base bid package for what we estimated around $200,000. Then they came back and said, "We have an additional $50,000. Can you come up with additional locations?" And we came up with, I think, seven, six or seven different intersections of multiple ramps per intersection, and then that just happened to come in over the $50,000.
Are there, are there any other board questions? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Valla. Consideration of Proposal for Legal Services for Cable Franchise Renewal, Ms. Tealie Coles.
Good evening. You have before you this evening a memo that outlines information related to renewing our cable franchise agreements. We have two franchise agreements. Both of them are 15-year agreements. The agreement with Verizon just expired, and the agreement with Comcast is set to expire shortly. As you can imagine, renewal and negotiation of a cable franchise agreement is a pretty complex endeavor, and so we are recommending that the board consider hiring the Cohen Law Group to take us through this process. Dan Cohen is renowned across the state in this area, it's all he does. He actually assisted Middletown Township 15 years ago in negotiating this contract. He works with the Bucks County Consortium, Montgomery County Consortium. I've worked with him in other towns in the past. A lot has changed in the last 15 years in terms of cable services, right? We get a franchise fee, which is a percentage of gross revenue of cable revenues generated in our community. You know, think of the things that have happened in the last 15 years, digital services, streaming, high-definition video-on-demand programming. So there are lots of things that aren't even contemplated in our current agreement. Also, we have, we're, you know, right now streaming to the internet... Also, we have, we're, you know, right now streaming to the internet and we have our cable access channel. So, one of the things that Dan will assist us in is, it's called a PEG grant, which is Public Education Government Channel. Hopefully, we'll get some assistance from that. So, the bottom line is, the first recommendation is that we do an audit of our franchise fee revenues. It's the perfect time to do that, and the Cohen Law Group can help us to do the franchise fee audits. We then begin the negotiation process and hopefully, at that point, we will be able to, you know, move forward. Franchise fee agreements are no longer 15 years. There's a recommendation that they're a little bit shorter. Cable companies like them to be longer. The good news, as you see in your packet, the proposed fees are based on the cost per audit of the two cable companies and the cost for negotiations. And then in addition to that, a fee for a needs report related to our government access channel. So, the total contract that I'm recommending is $26,660. We do have money allocated this year under special legal services. That line item has barely been touched this year, and that line item is $60,000. So, we are well below the budgeted threshold. Highly recommend this. It will be something that the board will be involved in, and, you know, that's that. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Will any of those prices increase at all?
No.
That's set.
Yep.
If there are no other questions, I would accept a motion.
I move to authorize acceptance of the proposal from the Cohen Law Group to provide cable franchise renewal services at a cost of $26,660.
There's been a motion, is there a second? Second. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have at five zero. Thank you, Ms. Tealie Kules. Next, we have a discussion of transportation demand management policy. Mr. Valla.
Thank you. I promise it'll make it, I'll make it sound more exciting than it seems to be on the surface. So, a transportation demand management policy, or a TDM policy, is really a tool that kind of accomplishes three different key objectives. One is to reduce vehicle congestion on local roadways. Two is to encourage utilization of public transportation and transportation infrastructure. And then third is to reduce transportation-related or generated emissions. A TDM policy is something that's specifically identified as a goal of the Climate Action Plan, and it is something that is consistent with the Township's Comprehensive Plan. Essentially, kind of the mechanics of this is, and tonight we're just talking about this, kind of introducing the topic and seeking the board's conceptual support for eventually pursuing and developing a policy. This would come to the board as a resolution and essentially outlining policy directives to the staff about how some various tools that are available to actually effectuate, reduce roadway conditions, and encouraging increased uptake of public transportation and the like. There's a number of suggested or typical policies or goals that you see in a TDM policy. One that we've looked heavily at locally, as a local example, is Laurin Marion Township. They're one of the only township-wide examples in southeastern PA. There's a couple in other parts of the state, and there is a hyper-local example, kind of a neighborhood within Upper Dublin Township as well. If the, if Middletown gets there, we would potentially be the first municipality in Bucks County to pursue this. This whole idea is coming about as a suggestion by the Transportation Management Association of Bucks County, or TMA Bucks. They are actually pursuing their own grant application to help fund their costs, who consult and help implement this policy. So, again, really looking for kind of the board's conceptual feedback, if there's interest in pursuing this further. And again, this would be likely kind of a mid-to-late 2024 adoption of the policy with implementation to run long-term.
Well, I'm a big supporter of this. I think it's a fantastic idea. I love being the first in anything, but especially this type of program. And I love that TMA Bucks will be involved to help with the grant application and implementation. So, personally, I'm very supportive of moving forward to the next steps.
So, I, I also agree. I think with the Climate Chain Action Plan, it goes hand-in-hand with everything we're trying to do, especially we're, we're doing the multimodal project right now, the strategic planning, and it just all seems to go hand-in-hand with what we're trying to accomplish. So, I think if we can be the first in Bucks County to start this, and TMA is going to assist us, I think that's a fantastic idea. We're excited.
Any other comments or questions for Nick? Mr. Valla, I apologize.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next, a discussion of 2024 budget calendar, Ms. Tealie Kules.
Just for public notification and to make sure we're all on the same page, the budget process is in high gear right now with our department heads. First thing we're going to be looking at is our capital planning meeting, and that's scheduled for Monday, August 28th. We'll be starting at 5:30. We're going to be meeting at the Community Park Barn this year. That will be a couple of hours of just discussing capital. Our first budget workshop will be on Monday, the 9th of October at 6:00 PM. We'll then have a board meeting on the 16th where there will be opportunity for further public input. Second budget workshop, October 23rd, 6:00 PM. As we typically do in October, we have two budget workshops and one meeting. So, you'll be off on the first Monday of October. The presentation is scheduled for November 13th with the opportunity for the board to consider approval on December 11th.
Thank you. With that, I'll move on to other business, and I'll start with Mr. Williams.
Nothing. Thanks.
Mr. Valla.
I just wanted to remind the board and the community that the Middletown Community Foundation is continuing to collect back-to-school supplies through the end of August. They can be deposited here at the Municipal Center, Inspire Credit Union on Business Route 1, First National Bank of Newtown on Business Route 1, and Raymore and Flanagan at Lincoln Plaza.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin?
No report this evening.
Ms. Tealie Kules?
It's very hard for me to put into words what a great night this was, what a great feeling it is. We really have a special team. It's a true family culture of recognition, camaraderie, shared support. We had three departments out here tonight and so much recognition, so just shout-out to our team for an excellent job, great leadership. Welcome to Riley, Bobby, and Tyler, and congrats to all the wonderful police work that was recognized tonight.
Ms. Hannah?
I also wanted to say thank you to the police and fire departments and, and all the departments in our township. I also wanted to, we're talking about the budget season, I wanted to recognize that I am truly appreciative of Middletown Township, and they have been awarded the GFOA award like five times in a row for, you know, our budget presentation award, excellent job. We have amazing people in our township, just serving our citizens in the best ways. Thank you.
Mr. Kisek?
I'll just, I want to thank our two chiefs, our police chief and our fire chief, for being here tonight to not only do the ceremonial swearing-in of the new firefighters and officers, but also for all the recognitions that the chief went through. Those are incredibly important. It's important for us to see those recognitions. It's important for members of the community to see those recognitions and to know the incredible work that's going on by first responders and public servants in the community. And so then I just want to welcome our new officers and our new firefighters, although they're really not new. And I want to thank and join in all the recognition that we extended tonight to all the police officers for their incredible police work, keeping our community safe.
Thank you. Ms., Supervisor Cain, Ms. Cain? Congratulations to everyone that was honored tonight, and welcome to all of our new officers and firefighters. Supervisor Corpol.
Again, sounded like a broken record, but I wanted to congratulate all the police officers that were honored here tonight. It was great to see so many people came out to recognize them, and I wanted to welcome and congratulate our new officers and firefighters that were sworn in.
Thank you, and I mean, just not to be redundant, but I have no other option at this point for going last. Congratulations to everybody that was sworn in tonight and recognized. It truly is a testament to the individuals that not only live in our community, but work in our community, and I know I am so grateful and touched and feel very privileged to have grown up here in Middletown Township, so thank you to everyone. And I'll also just add something different of Go Eagles, because I know the Eagles preseason has started. I'm sorry, chief. But with that, I would accept a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You're adjourned.